Birmingham City Council meeting. Today is July nineteenth. The time is nine thirty-five A.M. I call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We'll have invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilor J.T. Moore. You please stand and join us. Thank you.
Everyone, please stand and bow your heads. Father God, we come before you today just thanking you for this wonderful day, this wonderful Tuesday, God. You said to pray that the city prospers because if the city prospers, then the people will prosper. We thank you, Father God, that Birmingham is prospering. We live in a prosperous city. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to host the world, to be here, to enjoy this monumental event of the World Games. And we thank you for being faithful, God. We thank you for being faithful. We didn't have any major accidents, any major issues, Father God. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you for being here with us and thank you for supporting us. Father God, I ask that you continue to help us to foster that same spirit of collaboration that we had during the World Games throughout the rest of our time here in this city. The same type of collaboration that we had with other cities, with other, with volunteers and with people stepping up to the plate to make the World Games an amazing event. Father God, I thank you that we do the same thing as we continue to move forward in our regular, everyday lives, Father God. And so, we just, we just want to say thank you. We ask that you continue to be here with us at this council meeting today, Father God, giving us the ability to make wise decisions and good decisions that will improve the quality of life for each and every person that they will affect. And we just wanted to say thank you and we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen. Salute pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Moore. Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning.
Give a call to roll, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Councilmember Quinn. Councilmember Tate. And Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. President Protem Smithman.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Allison.
Good morning. Thank you very much. The minutes are not ready for March first through July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Madam President. Good morning to the entire council and good morning to the public. Madam President, I have some, and Council, I have some brief notes this morning. But I would first like to start by introducing my guest you see to my left, Queston Hill. He's shadowing me as well as the team today. He's had an opportunity to meet a few of you all. Queston Hill is a rising junior at North Carolina A&amp;T. And he is an economics major and he's from right here in Birmingham, Alabama. So I just wanted to introduce him to you all and to the public. Madam President and Council, I want to pick up where Councilor Moore left off, which is a sincere appreciation, gratitude, and thank you. History was made, July seventh through the seventeenth. I believe for quite some time, every Tuesday, we stood before this council and the city to talk about how many days were left before the World Games. Those days have come and gone. Thousands of people from literally Bangkok, all the way from Bangkok, from right here to Bush Hills, came out to witness thousands of athletes compete at the highest level in more than a hundred sports. The World Games twenty twenty-two was a great success. That is kudos to this council. That is kudos to every volunteer, to every public safety officer, to everybody, spectator, guests, everyone. And there's a lot of people to thank. Again, I want to start back to you. I want to thank this council for your leadership. Madam President and Council, I want to thank you for your partnership. Many of you all had some cool moments, giving those medals to those athletes, some who cannot even speak any English, but what a moment it was for you individually and collectively. And I also thank the residents of the city, the businesses in this city, and the community partners who cheered on international visitors, volunteered their services and spread some good, I'm not, I don't even say southern, Madam President, I say Birminghamian charm, which was good for us. And thank you to the City of Birmingham staff, to Kevin Moore, who you see present here, Chaz Mitchell, who was walking away. And countless, just all of the Birmingham City staff who leaned all the way in to assist Madam President and Council. While we were out doing a lot of the ceremonial things, they were here working twelve, sixteen-hour days, not ten days in a row, but some of them up to twelve days. So I'm making it mandatory for them to actually take a break at some point before the month of July is over. But I want to thank the city staff for their countless hours and for running, running this efficiently. And as well as thank you to the amazing athletes and visitors who shared this experience. Congratulations to all the winners, those gold, silver, and bronze medalists, and we hope to see them again at some point. Lastly, thank you to the World Games twenty twenty-two. Truly, I'm grateful for the execution, but I'm grateful for the World Games choosing Birmingham. So there's much more to come for our city, but that is to be continued on that conversation. Here's another note, Madam President. The BOL grant, we've been doing BOL for quite some time now, but I do want to make this public. The City of Birmingham is accepting proposals for its twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Building Opportunities for Lasting Development. That's what BOL stands for. Again, Building Opportunities for Lasting Development. BOL was launched, if you recall, back in twenty eighteen by the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. The whole idea was to allocate funding for organizations dedicated to economic development, not only, not only in a more efficient way, but to actually track and measure and hold those organizations accountable for public tax dollars. Our proposals will be accepted in six focus areas, so I'm going to call these six focus areas out, Madam President and Council, if you don't mind. One is small businesses, which include women, minority, and disadvantaged businesses, enterprises, workforce development, overcoming barriers, Birmingham neighborhoods, and then the last one is data-driven innovation. Those interested in actually applying and or in learning more should attend the public meeting. That public meeting will be via WebEx this Thursday, so that's in two days, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, at two P.M. Or you can visit birminghamal.gov/bol. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/bol if you cannot attend that meeting. But that meeting will walk you through the whole process of how to apply, what we're looking for, what we'll be assessing for, qualifications, et cetera. But so if you have an organization that you think meets one of those six focus areas of small businesses, women, minority, disadvantaged businesses, enterprises, workforce development, overcoming barriers, Birmingham neighborhoods, and data-driven innovation, please tune in. I have one more note. While the world has come and gone and while we're still on, feeling good about what's happening in the city, we don't forget the fundamentals of city government. Madam President and I attended the C.A.B. meeting last night. She didn't have staff, I didn't have staff, we didn't have our colleagues here, we just went into the fire pit ourselves. And it was a very extensive meeting. It wasn't just the C.A.B. leaders seated in your seats and right here in the pit, but there were many neighborhood officers out here from around the city here in the conversation sitting around those, their questions and their concerns and their issues, sitting around those fundamentals that we've been talking about for years, you know, in a particular neighborhood, if it's a square. Within this square, they have certain expectations for us to address, from paving streets to repairing sidewalks to the basic thing of trash, whether it's household trash or bulk trash, and blight removal and the empty or overgrown lot, as well as stormwater. In addition to that, facilities in that same block that include city-owned facilities such as libraries, parks, and recreation centers. That was the conversation last night, and those were the things that we address in the form of answering their questions and their concerns. Above all, I'd love to say that even today, on this council agenda, you have twenty-one houses set to be demolished that you all are going to approve today. In addition to that, you have four hundred and forty-seven original set, original lots sets for nuisance declarations to be removed. I do want the public to know three hundred and thirty letters have been sent to actual property owners, as I explained last night, that there's an expectation that the City of Birmingham government is responsible for cutting your neighbor's private empty lot? We're not responsible. However, what we do is start a legal process to go on private property because legally we just can't go on there just because it's overgrown. That process takes up to ten weeks. The city, as you know, has had an interesting history, history in not only white flight, but continued population decline, and we've had the combination of not only what I would call slum landlords, but absentee landlords that's lent itself to us putting a significant amount of money, well over ten million dollars over the last four years into black removal. That's increased the number of empty lots. Right now in the queue, if my math is correct, we have sixty-five-hundred lots on the list that have been proved to be cut. I think we all know the amount of horticulture employees we have, and even with the amount of private contractors, getting to sixty-five-hundred lots in a short time is not realistic. It's going to take some time. But I'm saying all that to say that these fundamental things, they are, are concerned about, we are addressing, we will continue to address, and I just wanted to state that publicly, Madam President, and I want to pass it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate these comments, and I know that our counselors will chime in later during our comments. I know we're all very excited about what Birmingham did for the world in hosting the World Games, and so I do believe I have one counselor that, a couple of counselors that would like to make comment. Mrs. Abbott.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to compliment everybody in the city for the World Games. It's just incredible what was accomplished, and it was incredible how wonderful everything looked. Communications were a little iffy sometimes, but you know, we only had one bite at the apple, you know, and we got it, and it turned out well. But I wish that you could talk to the citizens about what is going on with trash and brush again publicly, because I am getting tons of calls, and I know other people are too, about the July schedule or lack thereof. And we're telling people what we did yesterday, but we're not telling them when we're coming to pick up their trash and brush. And there's a lot of really angry people out there because we actually have some citizens who wait until the night before, like the law says, to put all their stuff out, and then nobody comes and picks it up. So please tell us what we are going to do because we were promised a new schedule and we didn't ever get it.
Madam, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
To Councilor Abbott's point, I will try to be succinct, and then if there's more time later, we can go into a little bit more detail and open this up, because I know you have an agenda before you. As I explained to the neighborhoods leaders last night, there are multiple things going on here. You have regular household trash that in the scheme of things is the priority. I think for every household, there's two days. If your first day is Monday, your second day is Thursday. If your first day is Tuesday, then your second day is Friday. And that's the primary that becomes the first responsibility as it relates to trash we take care of. I think what you may be referring to is the actual bulk trash.
Trash and brush.
The bulk trash pickup. We had an internal meeting a few weeks ago where I sat down with the Public Works team, and what they have shared was it's not just an equipment, equipment problem. It's very similar to a few other departments where we have since been aggressive within a retention program as well as recruiting efforts. We're short truck drivers. I was very honest, I was very candid with the neighborhood leaders yesterday around this topic. We're short actual people who are capable of driving those refi, those bulk and trash trucks. We looked at, we talked to Jefferson County Personnel Board, we spoke into H.R. We actually know how many positions are available versus how many are filled. There is a gap between those two things I've just described. We work with our H.R. department as well as Public Works Department and Jefferson County Personnel Board to increase the rate and pay of those truck drivers. In addition to that, you all know we've already, you've already approved to hire more equipment, more trucks. But as I've explained to those neighborhood officers last night, if you get to the airport and you get to your gate and there's an actual plane there, if you have flight attendants but no pilots, you can't go anywhere. We have a similar situation on the ground as far as related to that schedule, which is why it was reduced from the actual, I believe, two times a month to once every three weeks. What we've since done, since we've now ordered more trucks, since we've now been more aggressive with our recruiting efforts and that we've done retention to keep the truck drivers we have, everything we're sending around now is communication. So we put something out and inherently it's going to be behind. Our goal is, whether it's through birminghamal.gov, or LinkedIn, or Nextdoor, or Facebook, or Twitter, or Instagram, or three-one-one, whatever it is, is to communicate to the public and actually be vulnerable enough to, and honest enough to say, hey, we missed this date, we're going to make it up to you, we'll be back. And that's what we've been doing probably for the last few weeks, communicating if we have actually missed their date, that they have an expectation, which, the last note, Madam President and Council, what I shared with the neighborhood leaders last night is that's what we have to do. They have a fair expectation that if they put out based on the date we say we're going to put it, pick it up, we should pick it up. But if we don't pick it up, we need to communicate that we did not pick it up and be patient with us, we will pick it up. I expect that this gap in hiring will close at some point. I expect that that will align with new trucks being online. I expect a lot of this to ease up. Also, in addition to that, based on you all voting and approving uniform trash bins. So the uniform trash bins will not be able to roll out at the exact same time for all twenty-plus routes, but when they, we do face that in as that comes in, and if we, if you all allow, based on that pilot program, the uniform ninety-six gallon instead of two-a-days, one-a-day, that should ease up some of the burden where the bulk trash becomes more efficient because there's more ease on two-a-days for regular household, if that makes any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
We're still in trouble, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Moore.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilor Abbott making mention of that because that's definitely something that my office also gets calls about, but I appreciate the comments and the information. Another thing that, you know, is also kind of a top issue is, is street pavings and, you know, as far as which houses are in the queue to be demolished. And just trying to figure out or trying to make sure that people know exactly how to see when those things will be done for them. I know we have the street paving list that, you know, has the years by them, but knowing what has already been completed and, you know, when, when people can expect that something will take place will be, you know, good as well.
Yeah, so I think, Ms. Abbott, Madam President and Counselors, Ms. Abbott likes to tell me we need to educate the public more. I think the education and the communication piece, we talked about that. And so, for example, Jefferson Avenue has been one of the ones in the queue for quite some time. We recently shared in our communication channels that the bid process, which is kind of mundane, you don't talk about the bid process publicly, but we did, right? We told them it would be a sixty to ninety-day process. Turns out it was a little less than that. I think before you today is the actual who won the bid. I think once you all vote on that, we need to communicate back to the public, here are the next steps before that street will be paved. I told those residents last night who live in that area who've traveled Jefferson Ave, just using Jefferson Ave as an example, just because you approve it today, paving won't start tomorrow, right? There's still a few more processes and steps. I think these fundamentals we have to communicate process in street paving, in sidewalks, in blight removal, and other things, including the ten-week process it takes to actually, the legal, the ten legal-week step process it takes to cut a private lot that's next to you or your neighbor. And so, we'll communicate those things. Of course, you all approve, at this point, within ninety days, fifteen million dollars worth of street paving. But I think over the next year, you'll see a considerable amount of streets being paved. I think we just need to share that list publicly. I think you all approve at least, what, two-point-five million for blight removal? Two-point-five million for blight removal? So there is a list that I think we need to share publicly, as well as weed abatement. I think you all approve, what is it, one or one-point-five, one-point-two? One-point-five million for weed abatement and grass cutting for private contractors. So that's a, that's a very exhaustive list, but we can probably just send a personal link so they can see across the city and all nine districts what lots are being cut.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Woodson, and just to piggyback off with Councilor Abbott and Councilor Moore, said I was, you know, I just had this thought, what's the likelihood, you know, as, you know, we say all the time, education, that's the key, because I think that's the, the things that people are missing, like, can we get, like, fact sheets around? Like, this will have, this is the legality process. It takes ten weeks to have a lot cut, so I think if we were able to, like, have fact sheets when we go to neighborhood meetings, you know, we can print them off and give them, you know, to the public to make people aware, because I think that's the big piece of the puzzle that is missing. And so, it gets to this point where people want to point the blame, like, nothing is transpiring, but in actuality, people don't really understand the process of what's really transpiring.
So, you know, the ten of us were elected to our positions to represent, advocate, and change and fix things on behalf of the people we serve. I, I use this language of over-communicating. I think that's what we have to continue to do. There's so many different communication channels. We should, we should all accept everyone doesn't receive information in the same communication channel. Some people will come to neighborhood meetings, majority will not. Some people will check birminghamal.gov, majority of people will not. Some people will receive information secondhand or share something they've seen on the social media channel, others won't. Even our town hall meetings, I think for the first time ever, at least in our time that we've been together, Madam Abbott, I would say is dean of the council probably in your twenty years as well, there's ever been a town hall meeting on a single topic via stormwater. I think we need to continue to do those type of things where maybe the next one we have is actually on weed abatement, grass cutting, so we can explain to the public, not just the neighborhood leaders, but anybody who wants to attend, here is the actual process of why we just can't go on your neighbor's lot, and this is how it works. And as I explained last night, look, we can put more than one-point-five million towards cutting your neighbor's private property, but it's probably going to take away from the stormwater you want us to address, or the street you want us to repave, or the sidewalk you want us to repair. We can't put the same dollar amount towards everything we do, not to mention the, the basketball floors at our rec centers that need repairing, or the park that needs a new swing, so there are multiple things that need to be done on behalf of the citizens. Look, what I look forward to is my conversation with you all when the internal team clears. Do we do bond or do we do?
We'll see.
Do we do warrants? Warrants will be lower, lower cost, bonds will be higher. If we can do bonds, then we can do these things in bulk you all want us to address, stormwater, libraries, parks, rec centers, streets, et cetera. So that's what I look forward to, Madam President and Council, bringing it back to you so we can do those things wholesale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anna Protem.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Abbott, I think, was it you or maybe Chief Sparks, told us, Silver Scarborough sends us an email update every day, and it's really, really helpful, and I forward it to my neighborhood officers, and they tell you if trash and brush is going to be laid, who's being picked up today, so it's really helpful to know about that. I know everybody doesn't do email, but I can always forward that to you if, Mayor Woodson, you can tell us how Councilor Abbott can be added to that email.
No, I, I get that, but it's, it's after the fact. She tells us what they did yesterday or what they did today, but what are they going to do tomorrow? Whose, whose neighborhood is being visited tomorrow and the next day and the next day so that the citizens know they're coming?
I thought that's what the email said.
No. If you go back and read it, it's, this is what we did today, yay, yay, you know, these are the neighborhoods we visited. But it doesn't tell who's, you know, if somebody wants to know when their neighborhood's going to be picked up, there's no way to find out because they don't have a schedule on the city website anymore, and Miss Scarborough's telling us what they did and who they missed.
So, Madam President, just to your two colleagues' points, Ms. Councilor Smithman and Councilor Abbott's point, they're both right. There is information that's going out to say when we pick up. I think we can communicate that to y'all. At the same time, when we miss, we're telling people when we miss, including in the email. I'm not sure if you all are on the front end receiving when it goes out. That does go out. We'll be sure, I'll talk to the team, we'll incorporate getting to the council the dates, but the, the neighborhood officers are aware, but we'll make sure we get it to you all as well. And when we do miss, communicating that to you that we missed, which you should already be getting as well.
But yeah, I think Scarborough, Miss Scarborough's information comes out to everybody, but people are calling and saying, but when are they actually coming to our neighborhood? And there's no place to go look and see.
Okay, so you're up, okay.
And they did publish a July schedule before they took it back down again, so the people who got the July schedule are looking at it and saying, okay, my stuff's being picked up on the thirteenth. Well, you know, the thirteenth was several days ago. So that's the problem.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm, I'm.
Oh, here.
So I do have a request. So I know usually we have a town hall at the be, no, it's, it's, it's been different every year. It was at the beginning of the year during the pandemic, and then twenty nineteen was in the middle of the year, and that's when we usually get, like, an updated street paving list, sidewalk list and stuff. And we, I'm asking that for each counselor because I have people asking, when is my street going to be paved? And I kind of really can't tell them because maybe the list isn't updated, and just like the sidewalk and how many houses are demolished, because I don't think any of us know, and we want to be able to tell the residents, you know, we have gone, houses demolished. Have you gone by this property and seen this? Remember, we turned this in and now it's been demolished.
That will be taken care of. I will make sure the team packages together for the entire city and for individual districts so you can communicate with your constituents. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I have a house off of MacMillan. I have it right here. There is rotten fruit in the yard, there are rats that go to other neighbors' yards, there is a rotten refrigerator in the backyard, and then awful vehicles that are there, seventeen oh eight MacMillan Avenue.
Seventeen oh eight?
Yes, seventeen oh eight. If we could have somebody go out there, I have pictures too, that would be very helpful.
At least you didn't say seventeen thirty-eight, but nobody's going to get what I just said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
I don't want to miss out on this session, Mayor, so. So I've got just something to say about resurfacing. You know, I was pretty excited to hear that, or to be a part of us setting up fifteen million dollars for citywide resurfacing, and I know we're working off an old list, which that concerns me a little bit, but when I looked at this Jefferson Avenue costing seven hundred thousand, that just deflated me because that means our fifteen million dollars. I mean, if one street costs seven hundred thousand, that our fifteen million doesn't really go so far. So I am very interested in a bond, a bond issue or a warrant issue so that we can fund more resurfacing and other work that's needed. Another thing, the item revealed because of the, you know, all the detailed scope items, I'm not sure if milling includes, like, where we've resurfaced from curb to curb and closed up the gutters, if, if that can be corrected when we do a major resurfacing, because a lot of times, our contractors just go out there and they put asphalt in our gutters, and that affects the stormwater, I mean, the ability for the stormwater to get in the gutter. So I hope as we go through and do this resurfacing, we're correcting some of the old problems that were created in past resurfacing. Anyway, I, this was, having one street isolated like this really was eye-opening for me in terms of how much this really costs, and I think it's important for this public to know too that resurfacing- And I think it's important for this public to know, too, that resurfacing is very expensive. And so, we do need a lot more research, resources, because our streets, um, have a lot of deferred maintenance. And I know we're working off an old list, but the conditions are dynamic. They change all the time. The, the utility companies change the conditions, um, all the time. So, I don't know if the old list ref- reflects today's priorities. And like, we have a sidewalk master plan and have drone technology. It would be great if we could have, like, an overall assessment of the street condition so that, you know, we can set priorities with the limited resources we have.
Yeah. Madam President, just very quick response to your colleague's point. Very quick, you can time me if you need to. One is, I'll, I'll work backwards. Um, I'll, I'll will make sure that Ms. Denise Bell, uh, Mike Etting, and James Fowler give me a thorough response on taking care of what happens with the, once paving begins, those things you're concerned about don't happen. I'll make sure that's addressed, we get that in writing to this council. Make sure I do that, chiefs. Your second point, you're right. Um, Jefferson Ave is a lot of money for, you know, a stretch. The good news is that stretch is not a part of this fifteen million you approved. Last point, you all separate from your fifteen million dollars that you're, uh, the ten million that you're approving, the five million you approve, for a total of fifteen million. You also, you all also approve a half million dollars, uh, for this whole intentional strategic effort around street assessing, um, for a better way to grade them on how they need to be assessed. Just approve that for this July one fiscal year. So, I'm looking forward to the internal team getting back to me so they can get it back to us on what that looks like, and we can move forward.
Thank you. I think Proten had one more comment.
Yes, um, one more comment. Well, I need to thank you all for the World Games, uh, Chaz, Chief Mitchell, um, Nobody Knows, really, and Chief Moore. You guys were there from five AM to almost eleven PM for two weeks straight. That is hard. Um, they were in golf carts going around, so I really just, and Chief Sparks. Thank you guys for all that you all have done. I think that was a great event. Like, I, I really, I am really proud of Birmingham, because y'all there acted. I'm proud of y'all. Y'all, like, for real, y'all, everybody was so positive, and you saw so much hope. You saw people, they were excited even to go to CityWalk. And I hope we can keep that same spirit and energy going, uh, moving forward. And that shows really to ourselves that we can handle big events. Like, we can do much more, like, it, Classic doesn't have to be the biggest event that we do every year. Oh, and, you know, I, I know, and thank you, uh, rest in peace, uh, Mayor Larry Lightfoot. But Mayor Woodfin, I really have to applaud you for that. And the way you represented us on that stage, I was really, really proud. But the biggest thing I wanted to say, I sent this to my colleagues and Mr. Woodfin, I mean, sorry, Mayor Woodfin. But, um, in two thousand and nineteen, we did the, um, anti-human trafficking resolution passed unanimously by six out of nine of us. And they had an article to come out, AL dot gov, uh, AL dot com, who didn't see it. And they had so many arrests right before the World Games with human trafficking. Thirty-four arrests of commercial sex buyers, six arrests on human trafficking-related charges, eight arrests of adult males, fifteen adult sex trafficking victims identified. That is a lot. Four minor victims, two minor victims, um, identified, eleven more for sexual exploitation. I mean, it keeps going on and on, and it's just, that's amazing that we were able to do this, because we promised you all almost three years ago that we would work on human trafficking, and we were able to get this done. And shout out to Counsel Williams for the task force, he made sure that we got that done, so. I want to give us a round of applause, really. Human trafficking is very, very, it's a serious thing, because some people get in that ring and they don't come out. And, uh, we, as a state, we were able to save people's lives and turn them around. So, I'm just so happy, I'm just so happy and so thankful for you all. So, good job to us, good job to everybody on the World Games. I can't wait for all the other events that happen this year. Thank you.
And on, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
On that note, to my colleagues' comments, I got a text, uh, over the weekend from, uh, the HSI chief, um, thanking us for Birmingham Police's, uh, participation, as well as everybody, uh, downstairs, uh, with this human trafficking, uh, GameStop operation that was performed. He said, um, specifically Birmingham Police was the one agency that wa- had officers there throughout the entire, uh, throughout the entire operation, and it made a huge difference. So, thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, new police chief, and, uh, thank you to all of, uh, our officers that worked hard to not only make sure they were visible during the event, but worked behind the scenes to make sure that, uh, those that typically get exploited, um, did not happen in this city. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, I will conclude this section, um, just to, again, say thank you. I think it's important that when we reflect on the World Games, let's think about the positive image that we gave to people all around the world. And when you talk about southern hospitality, we talk about the hospitality of the magic city. I'm just excited for the thirty-six hundred athletes that had an opportunity to come here and see Birmingham and see it at its best. We also want to think about what we did. We made some great infrastructure improvements through the World Games. We were able to, um, make changes to our Bowwell Auditorium. Uh, we saw the beginning of what would be rapid transit. I think the blue lines, we didn't have it exactly as the way we wanted it, but it was, um, those blue lines and red lines and, well, yellow and green, how we, purple and white, how we, uh, got people through the city. Just the number of children that were able through some of the curriculum and activities in our Birmingham City Schools. They got to understand what these new sports activities were. I went to the, um, I think it was artistic roller skating over at, uh, the Crossflex, and it was as if I was seeing the Olympics with the, on ice, you know? So, just so many other things, um, how excited we got, with people climbing walks, you know? So, it was just exciting to see. I think everyone had an opportunity to, um, be a part of this. And so, I just hope those that did, they got an opportunity to witness history. I want to thank the multitude of volunteers that came out and supported these efforts. And again, um, I want to thank those officers who, um, turned me around and said, you got to go this way, you got to go that way, because they wanted to keep us safe. And so, and I thank people for the patience they had in wanting to ensure, again, that these World Games were important. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the World Games Committee, I want to thank the council, the residents who were here and were part of that. So, thank you all very much. I do want to end by thanking, um, the team, the Joint Chiefs of Staff. I've, I've appreciated that name since the day you gave it to them. But I want to thank the Joint Chiefs of Staff over there and, um, the Joint Chiefs, because, um, within the World Games, when we talk about trash, we talk about brush, we had residents that were over in Grisella, and they were just begging to get that bulk trash picked up. And I want to thank you for taking that time to hear those residents' pleas and cries to make that better. So, thank you. I know that was right within the middle of World Games, and maybe just a lesson learned. Next time we have the World Games, we may not have a community day in the middle of the World Games. Let's just try to get our scheduling together. But of course, when we have these annual events, we want it to happen. So, thank you all very much. Let's, uh, everybody, let's just give the city of Birmingham a round of applause. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies? All right. And if you will go ahead and lead us in, and the items being consented for consent?
Okay, the consent, the tender starts on page two, item three. Page twenty-two. Item, item six, uh, we're going to draw, uh, item four, that great chief. Page twenty-three, we have items seven, eight, and nine on consent.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, we have item number ten on consent. Page twenty-five, we have item number eleven on consent. Page twenty-six, we have items twelve and thirteen on consent. Page seven, items fourteen and fifteen on consent. Item number sixteen is on consent. Thirty, item number seventeen is on consent. Thirty-one, item eighteen is on consent. Page thirty-three, we have items nineteen and twenty on consent. Page thirty-four, item twenty-one is on consent. Page thirty-five, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six on consent. Page thirty-six, we have items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two on consent. Page thirty-seven, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight on consent. Page thirty-eight, we have items thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four on consent. Page thirty-nine, we have items forty-four, forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine on consent. Page, we have items fifty-one, fifty-two, thirty, and forty on consent. One, we have items fifty-five, fifty-six, seventy, eighty, eighty-nine on consent. One sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four on consent. Page forty-three, we have items sixty-five, sixty. Items sixty-nine and seventy on consent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, councilors, do you have any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? I would like to have it read, thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'd like to have a second and a motion, please, or entertain.
I'll leave it for a little second. Just pick one.
Yeah.
Pick two.
Give me one second, get all the rest of the consent. I should do it, Madam President. Just want to mention to you, uh, I mentioned to Counselor Abbott about contributing to the system that we call.
Yes.
When we do that, it won't make a difference for us, um, whether we vote or not. You still see the information. So, whether we're voting on the iPads or not, the information is available there.
Thank you very much.
Still working on the thought, but we're going, I don't know, we'll deal with it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think we got there, okay. Now, who made the motion?
I thought it was, was it her?
Please, second, if not, I heard Counselor Abbott.
We'll go with that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Favorably be known by saying, ah?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous?
Thank you very much. Those consent items do pass, and I did not read the statement, so let me go back and reread it.
I will.
All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, which were indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. And, councilors, thank you, we approved the consent agenda. If you were here for any of those items that were listed as being consented for consent, they have been approved, and we hope you have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. At this time, councilors, without objection, the rules are suspended for presentation, for presentations. At this time, Counselor Clark of District Eight does have a presentation that she'd like to make and a resolution in support of Ukraine. Counselor Clark?
President.
I believe you have some guests with you, thank you.
Yeah, I have some guests joining me, uh, at the podium. Good morning, everyone. Uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, it's my honor this morning to recognize a special relationship of longstanding between Birmingham and cities in Ukraine. It was such a glorious moment during the opening ceremony of the World Games, when the team came out on the field, and Birmingham and the world was just moved. Uh, it was an emotional moment, a proud moment, uh, you know, just so proud of their resilience and ability to be here. So, I'm going to present a resolution to, uh, Scotty and some guests, and ask them to, uh, talk briefly about this relationship. Uh, whereas Sister Cities International was established in nineteen sixty-five with a mission to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. And whereas, the Birmingham Sister City Commission was founded as a public commission by city ordinance on April twenty-third, nineteen eighty-two, and operates as a five-oh-one C-three not-for-profit organization that administers the American Sister Cities Program on behalf of the city of Birmingham. And whereas, in two thousand and three, the city of Birmingham formalized a sister-city relationship with Venetia, Ukraine, where ongoing medical, cultural, and religious exchanges with Venetia have engaged many volunteers and continues to actively operate throughout the year. And whereas, on February twenty-fourth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, unprovoked and without cause, Russia invaded Ukraine. The city council of the city of Birmingham joins the United States government in condemning open acts of unprovoked aggression in Russia, in, by Russia, in Ukraine since February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and specifically in Venetia on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas, on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, a Russian cruise missile strike on the central Ukrainian city of Venetia by a submarine in the Black Sea has killed at least twenty-two people, including three children, and injured dozens of innocent civilians. In solidarity with our sister city, Venetia, and the people of Ukraine, the council of the city of Birmingham grieves the loss of life in the July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two attack on Venetia. And whereas, athletes from Venetia and communities throughout Ukraine bravely travel to Birmingham to participate in the World Games twenty-twenty-two in spite of extraordinary difficulties in their homeland. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pause in its deliberations to celebrate and memorialize Ukraine's participation in the World Games twenty-twenty-two, and affirms, and affirm the longstanding relationship between our two cities, and support the United States government in increasing aid to Ukraine. Presented this nineteenth day of July, two thousand, I'm sorry, July, um, what's today?
Nineteenth, nineteenth, that's okay.
Of July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the recommendation of councilors Carol E. Clark and Dr. Daryl B. O'Quinn. So, I'd like to make a motion for UC, for the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, ah?
Aye.
All opposed?
And, thank you. I'd like to move the resolution.
Second. Yes, counselor.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, ah?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. And I'm joined by, uh, our former colleague at, at the city, who chaired the city's Sister Cities Program for many years, uh, from the Birmingham mayor's office, uh, retired, uh, city, uh, official Scotty Colson. And he's got some guests with him who, uh, would like to come and tell us more about this relationship. Scotty?
Thank you, counselor. Um, this is a, a wonderful opportunity. I also want to thank the whole council and the mayor for this. Uh, the war began in twenty fourteen with the seizure of Crimea and the invasion of the Donbass region. One thing to remember, too, is we have a sister city in the Donbass, Krasnodon in Lugansk Oblast. Krasnodon has been behind an iron and cyber curtain since twenty fourteen. Ukrainians who worked with us in Krasnodon. The Russian attacks and civilian targets is intensifying and increasing to a great degree. You have no idea what it meant to the people of Ukraine and to those athletes last week when they walked in and they realized they were Birmingham's other home town. That was truly a statement to this world and to them that we stand with freedom, that we stand for justice, and we stand for peace, and that we stand with our friends. This is an indication of that, and I truly appreciate that on behalf of the Embassy and the nation of Ukraine who allowed me to be their honorary council here in Alabama. It is truly inspiring, and also while I've got the microphone for I introduce our Sister City President. Put on your calendar, August 20, 2:00, an independent presbyterian. Our Ukrainian-American folks said, okay, do you want me to come to the 9:30 meeting and miss the 11:30 meeting? Planning for this? We've got work to do, so y'all come to the 11:30 one. We're going to have the Ukrainian Freedom Festival with food and music, the Alabama Symphony Orchestra members will be there, Ukrainian, local Ukrainian groups. The Ukrainian community is cooking, and we're going to have some wonderful things. We will have live Zooms from Venetia with a member of the RADA, who is their legislative body, who will be with us. We will have folks from the local refugee settlement agencies. The whole point of this is to raise money for relief of Venetia and the local refugee settlement agencies. So put on your calendar, you're beginning some more information from me real soon. And I'd like to introduce Jessica, who is our president of the Birmingham Sister Cities Commission, and is doing a wonderful job of promoting that and continuing on. So Jessica.
I will do that. Good morning. Not as good off the cuff as Scotty is, so I've prepared a couple remarks. On behalf of the Sister Cities Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you all for the support over the years. This is our 40-year anniversary with our first sister city in Hitachi, Japan. We plan to use the World Games momentum that you all set in motion to deepen our sister cities' relationships, to strengthen all those new connections that we forged over these last couple of weeks, and to use the momentum to expand our influence and impact as an organization. We are honored to represent Birmingham on the world stage, but we're even more honored to serve the city through grassroots diplomacy, sometimes called citizen diplomacy. This occurs when we foster people-to-people collaborations, exchanges, and initiatives like those facilitated by Sister Cities and the City of Birmingham. We want to thank the city for its continued support and for its commitment to strengthening international relations, as evidenced by recent events. We commit to using our global relationships to make an impact locally here at home. Thank you. I'm going to introduce Devon Treadwell, another board member for Sister Cities.
Good morning, it's Mayor Woodfin, the council. We're very thankful for the efforts that the city has provided with us to strengthen our relationships globally with our sister cities, especially with Ukraine, and we definitely continue to go forward with making Birmingham stronger and putting us on the map globally. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to note that our very own Don Lupo has also been very much involved in this relationship over the years. And Vlad, who's a city employee, I can't remember his name, but...
Chuenko.
But this has been a great relationship, and thank you all for your attention and support.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Williams?
Yeah, before Scotty steps out, I just want everybody to look at Scotty's tie, because it is... Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it, girl.
Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have to take a picture of that tie. Thank you very much. I would appreciate you, Counselor Clark and Dr. O'Quinn, for bringing this resolution and making this presentation. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, we'll return back to our agenda, and we shall call the first item.
First item, item two. Item one has been requested to be withdrawn. In ordinance to further the Minasoni District, BAP, the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2022-7, change zone district boundaries from QB2, general business district, QMUL, qualified mixed-use low, filed by Tim Owens, a property located at 180412 Avenue South, situated now northeast quarter of Section 1 Township, 18 South, range 3 west of the Hinkelman Plaza.
All right, thank you, councilors. At this time, I'll turn this meeting over to our Planning and Zoning Committee Chair, Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gambrell, will you read our case for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Tim Gambrell, I serve as the Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham. And this is case ZAC 2022-7 in the Five Point South neighborhood. Proposed use is a restaurant bar and patisserie that offers outdoor event space. The current use of the location, or the most recent use of the location was an event venue and tourist home, also known as Rucker Place, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. The subject property sits on approximately .39 acres of land, currently zoned QB2. Parcels surrounding the property are zoned B6. The applicant's proposal is to repurpose the building known as Rucker Place into a restaurant, bar, and patisserie named Frenchies. The new restaurant concept will include brunch, lunch, dinner menu that centers around French culinary techniques and dishes enjoyed thriving epicurean cities. Space will feature traditional bar, restaurant, late-night bar, alfresco event space, patisserie, cafe for breakfast and lunch, and full-service catering options. The city's framework plan identifies the property as mixed-use medium. And the property was rezoned in 2001 for COI, or contingency office and institutional use, to QB2, which limited uses just to the event center and the tourist home or B&amp;B that is currently, that was the previous use. And because of those queues, it necessitates this action today to allow the proposed use of the restaurant. The zoning ordinance, the applicant's proposed site plan, shows 22 parking spaces on the site. The parking requirement for a restaurant is one per 100. Therefore, the total number of parking spaces required is 67. They do have a couple of discounts for transit, but they still are deficient in parking slightly, and they're going to have to deal with that either through ZBA modification or by utilizing the city's adaptive reuse incentive. All landscaping must comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The Neighborhood, Five Point South Neighborhood Association met at its regular scheduled meeting on May 17, 2022. Their neighborhood was unanimous in their support of the project, tend to support, they're glad to see someone brought the property, and, you know, is concerned that it might be torn down at some point. The framework plan, the property is located within north side/south side plan area. That framework plan is scheduled for adoption this year. Implementation committee has not been formed. The Zoning Advisory Committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on June 7, 2022, reviewed proposed rezoning requests, and were unanimous in their support to recommend this request to the Planning and Zoning Committee. The Planning and Zoning Committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on June 8, 2022, to review the proposed rezoning request, and were unanimous in their decision to recommend the request to the Birmingham City Council with one key condition, that it would maintain its residential character. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This is a public hearing, is the applicant present? You would come, please, introduce yourself and tell everyone what you're doing.
Absolutely. My name's Tim Owens. I've been here a little bit over a year. My family and I moved here from Texas. My lifelong childhood friend Tyler is our chef in this venture, and my business partner, we're both 50/50 on this deal. Super excited to be doing this. Believe that we found kind of a hidden gem here in the Rucker Place. Gail and Jack have, were kind of just right at that moment where they had ran this event space for 22-plus years, and were ready to pass it on to us. So we've been going through the process, you know, trying to figure out exactly what it's going to take to be able to do this. This is a dream that Tyler and I have had for many, many years. I actually did come from Texas, and he had been in New York for the last 15 years doing some of the, you know, things in the food world that are probably some of the highest things you could do, you know. So to get him down here was kind of an act of God in itself, but we're happy to be here, and we think we can make this, not only the best French restaurant, I think this is going to be the best restaurant in all of Alabama. Gives us a space to do it, you know, with the three levels. Gives us, kind of like, I mean, he's already told you, we've got a lot of things going on under that one roof. But certainly open to any questions y'all might have.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll see if there's anybody from the community here who wants to speak about it, and then we'll let people ask questions. Are there any people in the audience who are here to speak to this issue? Because it is a public hearing. Seeing no one, are there members of the council who have questions that they would like to ask the applicant? Well, this is a great location, that is a fabulous house that y'all, of course, it's not a house anymore, but it was a very nice house, and it's a great location. I've had a lot of victory celebrations there for City Council. A lot, I had my last one last time, so...
I think that's something pretty cool, is that even people that have had their wedding there or have been to an event there, like you say, with a celebration, you know, when they're dining in there, they'll be able to have those fond memories.
Oh, and it has a great view of South Side Baptist Church, too.
Absolutely.
Anyway, so, thank you, no questions, we're ready to vote.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll call for the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Deborah Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Councilpro, Tim Smith? Council President Alexander?
Aye. Sounds like it was unanimous. Thank you very much, that item passes. Thank you, and good luck on your adventure. We look forward to being there, thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next would be just communications from my office relating to item 71, emergency repair notice for the purchasing agent related to the repair of the Birmingham City Jail Sally Portlocks. Item 72, emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent related to leakage at the Botanical Gardens. And item 73, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent related to the installation of HVAC unit at five station number 21. Finally, item 74 is the last item. Resolution accepting the contract and unit price bid of Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated, Birmingham in amount of $676,565.45 for the Jefferson Avenue Southwest resurfacing, this being the lowest responsible and responsive bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Southeastern Seal Coating Incorporated. Substances are formed contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, writing that the total compensation paid under the contract now to see the appropriation.
Second. All right, councilors, at this time, we're considering a resolution which does allow the city to accept the contract and the bid for the paving at Jefferson Avenue. I believe this paving will be from 31st Street, from 40th Street to 31st Street. So we're talking really 10 blocks, which is a very vital artery within District 7. And this has been a long time coming, and with your vote today, we'll be able to go through the process of beginning this project. It won't happen tomorrow, so don't call me and ask me when it will start, but it will, it will, this puts it in motion to happen. So, councilors, any questions? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
And this is a general question. I would like to be able to read the specs for our paving. What do we require these people to do? How many inches of asphalt? What kind of protection do they have to put over the sewer inlets so that they don't get stopped up? You know, that kind of stuff. So can we have that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Right, Councilor Abbott?
Aye.
Councilpro?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Out. Councilpro, Tim Smith?
Aye.
Council President Alexander?
A resounding aye. Thank you very much, councilors. I know the residents of District 7 will be very happy to see this paving commenced. Thank you very much, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, that makes us to the end of our agenda. All right, thank you. At this time, councilors, we will entertain requests from our speakers list. If you would please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and there are certain decorum that we ask, and we give you three minutes. We're excited to hear from you. So, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the first name.
Deborah Alexander? Deborah Alexander?
Good morning, Ms. Alexander.
I just wanted to come in, I am Deborah Alexander, and I opened up a cosmetology school here in Birmingham. And I just wanted to come out and express myself to be able to let the council know who I am and what I represent at the school, to help those individuals that want to be entrepreneurs, business people, to learn the trade that they have been gifted with. And I'm in District 1, but all of us in Birmingham are part of this school because it is a community school to help those individuals to make a better life themselves. So I just want to come introduce myself to you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you, and good luck with the school and the new venture. Thank you.
Andre Aronson?
Yes. Thank you, hello, Mr. Aronson, I think you've got some guests with you, too, right? Good morning, tell us who you are, who you're prepared for.
Thank you. My name is Andre Aronson, good morning, council, good morning, mayor, Madam President. I am representing the AGG, the Boys and Girls Club. I'm a native of Birmingham, and my, my classmate of 1987, Kevin Moore, here. I have to throw that in, Ken. That's right, two state tatters, yeah. But no, I'm a serious number, here to say thank you to the council for all that you guys have done for the AGG, the Boys and Girls Club. And we know we have a lot of supporters on this council, and we thank you for your support. We wanted to come out, because we do receive a lot from the community, and today we wanted to demonstrate this through giving you a token of appreciation. But we also want to give you an update on some of the progress, you know. Like many human service agencies, we were impacted by COVID, and, you know, the AGG, the Boys and Girls Club is on a rebound. In 2021, the number of young people that we served was only about 80 kids a day at the Howlett site. Currently, we had 93, that's a 16% increase. We've also established a partnership with Legacy Prep Charter School, and we're serving over 120 kids in addition. So between the Howlett site, as well as the new 120 kids, you're talking about a 166% increase in, in the impact of touching young people in the city of Birmingham. The Legacy Prep partnership's been really phenomenal. They enrolled over 185 young people this summer, and as I stated, we're seeing 120 of them on a daily basis. We also, some of the things that we've highlighted this year is we partnered with the Birmingham Parson Rec, where we partnered with the Youth Summit, where there was over 200 young people that came out and participated. We're bringing back youth sports, AGG, the Jaguars Football and Cheerleading will be in full effect this fall. So we're looking forward to that, but we did kick off basketball and baseball last fall. So the youth sports have connected with young people. Councilman Clark and Councilman Wardine, you guys came out because we had a tragedy, a loss of one of our young people. And, and through TC Consulting, they helped us through some of our tougher grievance, grievance moments, and we partnered with the mental health group, professionals from Alabama Power, Vulcan Group, Coca-Cola, and Altech. And the young people designed their own mental health app, and they called it SWEET, right? So these young people are learning coding, they're learning youth development, they're learning workforce development, you know... help them to get that opportunity, just as, uh, Mr. Washington gave me and so many other young people several years ago. And so, at this time, I want to break. Dominic, uh, come forward. Uh, Dominic runs the Howlett unit and he'll introduce our youth ambassador and, uh, and then we will present you with your token of appreciation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm Dominic McCoy. Uh, I'm the clubhouse director over at Walter Howlett, uh, which is our main site. Um, over there, we just try to reach out to the kids and we give them some enrichment. As he stated, uh, we have a lot of, of exciting things going on throughout the city. Uh, right now, I just want to introduce our Youth of the Year, uh, Ms. Janee Harris. Uh, Youth of the Year, uh, is a program, is a program where you are the highest ranked or notified youth in our clubhouse. Uh, you get to, get to compete on a city level, state level, national level, and this time she competed at a city and state level, Ms. Janee Harris.
Good morning, everyone. My name, my name is Janee Harris. I'm going to the ninth grade and I will be attending Ramsey High School. I've been going to the club for three years now and it's been, it's been the best experience ever. The co, the club provides us with numerous activities, they provide many things for us to go to. Like, this summer, we were provided with the drone class that taught us how to fly drones and I could say it was pretty fun. I had fun, the teams had fun. We also were provided with a field trip to the Space and Rocket Center and we also toured Alabama Annual. So, basically, each week, we do something different where each week has a topic. So, one week, we had Sports Week, which was surrounding the World Games and during the club, we created our own World Game teams where we competed with each other to see how good our teamwork was. Also, basically. Okay. Touch it down. Also, Taco Bell came out yesterday and they donated money to the team center and I could say we're very grateful for that because the team center is like our home. We stay up there, we do activities up there. We also have in the morning, summer grind game, where my teacher, Ms. Lulu, she teaches new things every day that we didn't know. Like for Sports Week, I learned about hockey, never knew anything about hockey. I learned about lacrosse and also during that week, we were surprised with tickets to inline hockey at the Cosplex. They also gave us tickets to the Bears game and other tickets to World Games. And I can say, the club is truly my safe place. Um, I probably wouldn't be up here right now because I was very shy when I first came to the club, but I can say it brought me out my shell and I hope that my peers come out their shells too, if they have one. And I want to say thank you for your support and I'm looking forward to the club giving more opportunities.
Thank you very much.
So, once again, you know, truly, we thank you for helping us to make great futures in the city of Birmingham and in each and every one of these young people's lives. So, at this time, we'd like to give you a token of appreciation. I don't know if it's appropriate if they come to you or how, how should we do this handoff?
If we'll let them, if you let them through the gate and they can come up and present and then if you'll line up here and take a, so we can take a picture, P I O, if we could get them in front of us, that'd be great. Yes, Ms. Clark, while they're coming?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, welcome Mr. Arrington back home and to work every day in District Eight. So, we're, we're just delighted to have, uh, new leadership at the club.
Beautiful.
It's an important institution. It, it serves, it's based in District Eight, of course, but it serves students, uh, young people from all over the city. And so, we're really grateful for you and look forward to partnering with you. And I, I say this on behalf of all the residents of District Eight and also one of our neighborhood presidents, Adelaide Trone is in the back, so I know it's near, near and dear to his heart as well. So, welcome home and we look forward to working with you.
Thank, thank you and, uh, yeah, I mean, every time you name a name, you know, Adelaide Trone's a, is a, is a family friend and, uh, I can't, I'll be remiss, uh, Ms. Catlin, Mrs. Smithman, grandmother, you know, her praise me, you know, and her mom, you know, dad, so tell them I said hello. Uh, you know, this, this city means so much to me. Uh, I still own the home that I grew up in on Bush Boulevard, so, you know, uh, just, uh, just, uh.
Thank you. Ms. Tate has something she'd like to say.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Arrington and your staff and to all of the, the, um, teachers at the Girls and Boys Club, all of the young people, I'm super excited, um, for your future, your life, where you're going, all the things that you are pouring into our young kids, so it does, you know, continue to let people know that we do have some great kids, Mr. Adelaide Trone, I see you out there, my brother, um, that we are doing some wonderful things with our kids and exposing, just to hear the young lady talk about lacrosse, hockey, um, I got an opportunity to spend some time, uh, at speed skating, presenting a gift and had an opportunity to talk to the International President to say we need to, and I talked to the mayor about this, that, about some skating for our young people because a lot of our kids are not exposed to this event, but thank you all, Mr. Arrington, for what you all are doing out there with our young people and we hope that this will catch on fire throughout the city and thank you for partnering with Park and Recs Board, uh, Ms. Janee Edding Bennett as well, um, because our chair, uh, Councilwoman Clark chairs the park board, but I'm a committee, so we are truly committed to making sure that our young people take the direction that they need to take and continue to represent Birmingham in a grand way.
Perfect. Thank you. And we'll let Mr. Moore close us out.
Oh, yeah, I'll be very brief. Um, I'm just excited to see that the work is continuing. Um, definitely want to say congratulations to you and, and thank you for the work that you're doing, um, here with AGG, the Boys and Girls Club. Um, it's just a beautiful thing to, to see young people, uh, flourish and blossom and to, you know, uh, really fulfill that potential. Um, for her to say that she was shy and now she's able to stand here in front of a, a council meeting, um, not only talking to us, but the city, right? With full confidence and, you know, uh, really handle yourself, I'm just excited and proud of each and every one of you, so thank you for the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much. Again, we are, just we'll stand and take that picture. Councilors, how do we hold us? This is very beautiful. Thank you so much.
Y'all let me know when the next, uh, ping pong tournament or something is.
Wonderful. And all right, and we want to thank, uh, again, our students and our campers over there at Boys and Girls Club and, uh, for the young lady that got up and did the presentation, we want to thank you and I'm looking forward to seeing you. You'll either be in this chair, that chair, or how about that chair over there? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next.
You and Dee Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
DJ Jones?
Mr. Johnson, good morning.
AJ, good morning.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Didn't want to use my government name. Good morning to the greatest council on the planet at this point.
Thank you.
Well, uh, the reason I came today, uh, talking about World Games, talking about Birmingham Stallions, talking about so many great things and the evolution of our city, when we have new blood that pumps a vital part of the organ, which is the heart of the city of Birmingham, from the mayor's office to the senior citizen, to the youngest child, and we just saw that with these young people and the young lady that stood before the council and said that at one point in her life, she was too shy to speak. Well, I've never been too shy to speak. I'm a graduate, I'm a graduate of Hayes High School, I'm a honorably discharged vet, veteran, and I'm a medalist. So, when I saw the council, working at Legion Field, this past month has been a blast. Y'all missed it. Y'all missed it. I ain't see you Cedric, I was looking for you everywhere. Uh, finally got a chance to see the mayor and me and the mayor had words, that's right. For anybody that don't understand this, anytime you work on somebody's campaign, it gives you the right to say how you feel to them, because if you've been walking with them, knocking on doors and people said, "Man, I wouldn't let you in my house if you hadn't been with AJ." That's right, they said. So, what I wanted to come to this council and say is this, you guys, there were a lot of shortcomings. Don't get, I'm not gonna get it twisted, Crystal, I'm not gonna get it twisted all the time. I'm gonna tell y'all, there were a lot of shortcomings with this, uh, World Games and a lot of people are upset, but with the gratitude we gave today and with those children still being in hallway and this young brother right here from North Carolina A and T, I cannot sit here and throw you under the bus. Uh, I want to tell every council person that, uh, got out, talked to people from, whether they were from Russia, I met people from Russia, France, Italy, um, I didn't meet nobody from Ukraine I was looking for, um, but for the most part, I had a chance to walk around with three city council people and I enjoyed myself, Latonya Tate, uh, my little sister, Crystal Smithman, and I called Carol Clark several times, never called me back. I don't know why. I guess she was down there with my chief. She, she, she was down there with your chief. But anyway, to make a long story short, Birmingham city workers, you couldn't have had a World Games without Birmingham city workers. That's right. That's right. That's right. I see, I see everybody in the club. So, with that being understood, I heard what the mayor said and, and mayor, you couldn't have been more eloquent in what you said today. We need to hire from the inside, inside of the building, not from the outside. If you're talking about retaining, if we're talking about retaining good workers and we're talking about retaining and gaining truck drivers and people to do this refuge that you talked about, Ms. Abbott, we're gonna have to talk to people the right way. We're gonna have to sustain them, understand what they're going through and every council person is gonna have to get in one of their faces and say, "Hey, tell us what your problem is." Now, I don't need to know what everybody's problem is because everybody's gonna have a problem. No one is gonna be excused from the problem. And by me working at Legion Field, I worked for a boss that's, I don't know how you can describe Janee, but I would describe her best as being a person who is prolific and being able to listen. She's able to listen and she's able to understand when you're going through something. All of us have gone through a trial. Nobody knew what to expect from the World Games, not Nick Sellers, not nobody else. And I told him, I told Nick Sellers to his face, "You have to put some color in that, uh, flag over there because we're not gonna have a flag that's gonna be held by all whites, we're not gonna have a flag that's gonna be held by all blacks." Hunter, you and I have had these conversations and we have to continue to have these conversations if we want to bring the police gangs here to Birmingham. Uh, Councilperson Alexander, you made a wonderful statement. This city has always been able to do great things. We just haven't had the leadership that wanted to get on the same page and pray like this young man JT Moore prayed today. God, give us the understanding that we can still be in one accord and sometimes you have to get on your knees to really understand that you're gonna have to ask the true question to God or you're going to hell because heaven is not a manifest. Heaven is not a manifest, heaven is a work. So, we need to stop playing the game because people saw us all over the country, Facebook, uh, Instagram, they saw Birmingham and, uh, Mayor Woodson. Your city was clean. Your city was clean from top down. Now, we didn't pick up all the garbage, Ms. Abbott. Now, we did, but mayor, we do need more equipment. We do need sustainability, we do need Chief Moore, we do need Chief, uh, Mitchell, we do need, uh, Chief Spars, people to come to people and say, "Hey, man, show appreciate you." So, uh, Mayor Woodson says, "Nobody else won't do it, I'm gonna do it." Mayor Woodson, we need a day from the city council right, right now mandated that y'all can get them food trucks out there and you can call us and say, you can call all the deputies. Oh, I want to make sure I give all the deputies, uh, from the city of Birmingham, Park and Recs, uh, Public Works, I want them to know that we couldn't have did it without you because we needed leadership to be passed down every morning at six o'clock. I want to call their names, uh, Terry Davis, I want to call their name, Charles Brundage, I want to call their name, Eric Willis, I want to call their name, some of these men who have families and who went out here and gave it all they had to make sure that the World Games was stellar. It was a stellar event in the city of Birmingham, the city that I was born and raised in, that's right. So, to you, uh, Ms. Alexander and to you, Ms. Tate and to the little girl, Latonya Tate, to the little girl that we helped while she was sick, almost passed out, but we revived this young lady, to Police Officer Blair and the Birmingham Police Department who came to our rescue and said, "Hey, let me call the paramedics. We needed a paramedic downtown on Fifth Avenue and there was no paramedic." So, yes, there's a lot of work that we got to do and y'all, and another thing you said, JT, about wisdom, wisdom in passing it down, father, to our leadership, because if the leaders are good, the people are good. Hey, Randall, you must be doing a pretty good job. You know why? All folks welcome to me, Randall, and they say, "AJ, you know, you picked a bad one one time, but you picked a pretty good one this time." And so, and so I say to them, I say, "It wasn't me," but I'm just saying this, to the guys that I know, Hunter Williams, Darryl Quinn is not here today to represent Gate City, but I want him to understand this. I called Cedric last week and I talked about, uh, Chief Moore, I talked about how the grass needed cutting and how the children need to be re-motivated. I'm talking about, I, we ain't had no killers or shooting on First Avenue, man. And I'm telling you, it really, it's, it's like a light just pops over your head when the children tell you, they say, "OG, OG AJ, we appreciate you, man. We appreciate you cussing us out. We appreciate you fussing at us." That's why I laugh about it, but here's the, here's the deal, you can't tell me not to cuss and fuss if I'm getting cussing and fussing at the house. If I'm getting cussed and fussed out at the house and then somebody else say, "Pull up your blank, blank pants, boy," and they pull their pants up, see, none of y'all can tell me, and see, JT, that's what we got to arguing about, that everybody else jumped in the conversation, but then they get in trouble theyself. So, my thing is that you can't tell if you can't lead. You can't listen and lead. You have to be able to have one focused mind and I just want to tell the council today, and I'm talking about lead from you to the lady that died, what, what was her name, lead? Paula. I'm talking about people who are, I, I've been coming to this city council speaking out for over twenty-five years, I'm counting your age, uh, Valerie, so I just want y'all to know how much I appreciate you. I appreciate you. I appreciate you so much, young lady, who I'm looking at right now. I appreciate you when you out there with us parking cars, I appreciate when you come over there and pat us on the back, I appreciate that. I appreciate all the people in the back who sometimes don't get no hand clap, because everybody in the front always, everybody always see you. Latonya, I can't tell you how magnificent walking down City Walk was with you, uh, Friday or Saturday. I enjoyed myself, people running up to me, "AJ, is that the city council person? Let me meet her." People want to meet y'all because now they don't want to talk negative all the time. Some of these people want to tell you how enthralled they are to see their city growing. The Birmingham Stallions were undefeated in the first year back. You, are you kidding? And Mayor Woodson, I know we gonna do something because I've been asking my little brother, Cedric Smart, to get Nick Saban to come up here and sign some autographs for three years, man. Oh, I'm, I'm turning a line in your face. So, I'm just saying, I want to tell y'all, don't stop, don't stop the party. Don't stop the party, Rock, because people want to feel this. And I know I just blew a fuse, I can't even call my baby name, but I'm just telling you, young lady sitting in the middle, but both y'all, all three of y'all back there, I want to tell y'all that things don't happen unless you guys push buttons. Unless y'all push buttons back there, things don't happen.
Thank you, AJ. We appreciate you.
Y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
And I believe Ms. Cook and Mr. Mohammed are speaking. Thank you.
I'd like to say to our mayor, our council papers, officers, visiting friends, my name is Magnolia Cook, and I'm chairperson for the Function at Tuxedo Junction. I'm here to thank the mayor and the city of Birmingham for all the support of the festival for these years. And this is the thirty-sixth annual Function at Tuxedo Junction Jazz Festival. This is the longest-running festival in the city of Birmingham. This project is put on for a very strong reminder to our young peoples and to everyone to let them know about the contribution that has been made to Birmingham and to the world. It is also a continuous reminder to everyone about our heritage and beginning. And we are asking everyone to come out and enjoy the many local talents in the city of Birmingham. We start out with religious, we go to jazz, and then to blues. It's all free for many vendors, health screen, boat and boot, and many more exciting things going on, also scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Thank you, Mr. Muhammad.
Uh, to the mayor and council, uh, my name is William R. Muhammad, uh, 411 Loraine Street. I'm here, I'm working with Ms. Cook, and I was just here to also thank you and ask you to help by spreading the word that the Function at the Junction is, uh, this Saturday is always the fourth Saturday in the month. Not the last Saturday, but the fourth Saturday in July. We trying to keep that date because a lot of people remember it. And I just wanted to say that the Function at the Junction is bigger than most people realize. Uh, the history of it is something that we have to move to teach and to give the principles of. Uh, Erskine Hawkins Park is where this event takes place, and that's in Tuxedo Junction. But the history of Tuxedo Junction was that Erskine Hawkins was a student at Park under the great Fest Watley. And he learned music dealing with Fest Watley, who a lot of people at that time did. But he played in Tuxedo Junction as a high schooler. And also, he got a scholarship to go to Alabama State. Now, Tuxedo Junction, and I got to do some research, Ms. Cook. This is my spiritual mother now. I tell you how I got connected with her and me. But I had to do some research. What was Tuxedo Junction called before they called it Tuxedo Junction? Because that was not the actual city name of it. The story goes that people used to get out working, the plants around Enslin, and they went to the ballrooms that were, the clubs that were down on Tuxedo Junction, at the junction. We know that the junction was where the Tri-Cos system came together. But they would bathe after work, the bathhouse is my daddy calling it, bathe then go straight to the clubs and to the ballrooms, and, and they would rent a tuxedo from a place that rented tuxedos. So, the people gave it the name Tuxedo Junction. I believe if we did the research, it won't show in the city that was named Tuxedo Junction at that time. But Erskine Hawkins played in Tuxedo Junction as a high school student. He got a scholarship to go to Alabama State. And Alabama State at that time, from what I've been told, were using the, the band and using people in the band to go out and book, uh, concerts and raise money for the school program. They're right here now, uh, Mr. Lawrence. Your uncle was on that bus, you told me. Because the Cocks have always been great musicians and people of music. So, they were so good that they left as the Bama State Collegians, but when they got to New York, they ended up being signed and they turned into, uh, the Erskine Hawkins Orchestra. I think they said they were the house band for the Savoy Ballroom. And one of the songs they used to play when, at the end of that show, was a song that Erskine Hawkins had wrote about Tuxedo Junction in Enslin, where he did a lot of his playing and training. And they would close the show with that. This song was recorded by him in nineteen thirty-nine. And it was heard by, what was the guy now? Glenn Miller, who bought the song from him and covered it. And when he covered it, it became number-one hit. And it's even mentioned in the book, Malcolm X autobiography. He says, "The number-one hit, a place in Birmingham was number-one hit in the world. Number-one hit all across the country." So, I conclude by saying, this is thirty-six years. I want to tell you about my spiritual mom, come on over. And how we got to go. I told Ms. Cook, who's been working from day one, who was a part of developing this idea with Mr. James Cotton, I talked to her, I was on my way from Detroit yesterday, and I asked her, "Does Mr. Cotton still live?" And she said, "Yes, he do." So, we got to give Mr. Cotton, thank him, because he came up with the idea of working for the city of Birmingham as a, a, a community, whatever they, they call the people that works in the neighborhood, that work for the neighborhood from the city. And, and they came up with the idea about, what should we do to, to give the people more spirit and joy in where they live? People live in this area that has really become a depressed area now, but don't even know the history. That people from all over the world come. People probably come from Ukraine and Russia, come down to look at one plaque, one building that's left. Now, now, they know about this, but our students in the schools that, uh, around the schools, there are probably people in this city council don't even know the history of what these people did. And, 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 and not only did Erskine Hawkins never save the, the, the school by raising money, but they made Birmingham famous, but so did World Games. It was famous all over the world because of that song, Tuxedo Junction. So, in closing, because Reverend O.G., A.J., he didn't already say something. But in closing, I told Ms. Cook, "Ms. Cook, I'm going to help you on the twenty-fifth anniversary." Man, God, it's a monumental thing. Twenty-five years, I'm going to help you. And I forgot. I came up here before we told you, I forgot. It passed by, and I didn't do anything. So, after that, I, I owed my life, the rest of my life to Ms. Cook because I didn't, because I've been there ever since then, after twenty-five. And this is the thirty-sixth anniversary. Think about it. This is iconic. This is not just a neighborhood festival, neighborhood thing happening. Thirty-six years, and I want y'all to tell me something else that's been going on in Birmingham for thirty-six years. I'm not aware of it. Anybody else know something? And this was always, and this was maintained by Ms. Cook and neighborhood women, neighborhood women, black women. Never had a shortfall, never came back up to you saying, "We need more money." I mean, we had some big fabulous festivals that lasted two or three years right there, and every year, they went over budget. I heard somebody mention from over to the town of there, the World Games might be over budgeted. But this happened with neighborhood women, black women who kept it going and always was on budget. I don't remember anything pretty negative ever happening. And I got to respect that a lot of it. So, I'm just a little passionate about it and excited for that. So, this is our thirty-sixth year. Ms. Cook been there every day of thirty-six years. Ms. Cook goes to the gym, and I tell her, uh, she better than me because I had an herniated disc, and I would thank the Lord because that's the only way to get out going to the gym. I said, "I got a bad back." I can't go. But Ms. Cook still goes to the gym, and that's why she's so beautiful at the age she's at.
Well, Mr. Muhammad and Ms. Cook, we thank you both, and we appreciate your service for bringing this festival, this function, to us. And, uh, Ms. Clark had a comment.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you for being able to execute the festival this year. I know you're working on a shoestring budget, and I'm going to make it up to you next year. And we're going to start right after this, right after this, getting the funding in place for next year. Because, you know, this is a, a very historic, uh, well, first of all, the Function at the Junction, uh, celebrates a place that is known the world over by, from the song that was so popular in the thirties and, and on. But, uh, when people come to Birmingham and say, "I want to see Tuxedo Junction," I'm like, "You really don't want to see it because it has fallen into such despair." So, to keep the, the heritage alive through this festival and, and your efforts. And I think, uh, to Ms., Ms. Cook, your church, all of that could be a really important black heritage site because, you know, that whole Holy Family Campus and the, and the hospital and, uh, the junction, you know, that's, that's a rich part of our heritage that we really need to, uh, figure out how to do more for the physical look of it. But, uh, you have my support. It might not look like it this year, but you know you have my support, and we'll get everything ready for next year. Okay?
Thank you.
What was your uncle's name?
Uh, my uncle Pete was a part of the Bama State Collegians, and they were formed by the Fest, by Fest Watley and other business people in Birmingham to raise money for Alabama State Teachers College, is what it was called back then. And, uh, they went to New York. Some say they stole the instruments because they never came back.
I heard one they were saying, "Yeah, so when we rolled off with the bus."
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, uh, that concludes our speakers list, and we'll have councilor comments, and I'll start with Councilor Moore.
Okay.
Okay.
Call me, I'll go.
That's okay. That's okay.
Uh, well, first, I'll just talk about the World Games. Everybody has already said, man, I'm, I'm so thankful for, you know, our city workers that, you know, really, uh, pulled this whole thing off. Definitely wouldn't have had that type of experience without them. Just want to, you know, publicly say, uh, happy anniversary to, to Nick Sellers. Um, I saw, uh, where he, you know, was, uh, yeah, took advantage of the opportunity. Man had, you know, a new play fiasco to, to, you know, shout out to his wife for their anniversary. So, I was like, man, that's big. My punch, but, um, yeah, so, and then, uh, I also would say, uh, I know everybody probably has some of their favorite events that took place. Uh, thank you. Some of their favorite events, but by far, sumo wrestling was one of the coolest things that I've had an opportunity to, you know, watch. Uh, it got real intense out there. Um, and I think that, you know, everybody who was able to be there felt that energy. Um, and that's something that I think we should, you know, find a way to, to keep going. Um, yeah, like, I think that will be good. Um, so this week, we have, um, three Neighborhood Association meetings taking place. Today, we have the South Woodlawn Neighborhood, uh, so, Association Meeting taking place at six P.M. on Zoom. Uh, we also have Norwood taking place tomorrow at six P.M. on Zoom. And then Monday, we have, uh, Kingston meeting up at Royal Event Center at six P.M. Uh, so please go check out the Birmingham City Council website, Find District Four, and you will be able to find all the details for those Neighborhood Association meetings. Uh, this Tuesday and Wednesday, Emotion Therapy invites all to Eastlake Park for yoga in the park. Uh, yoga mats are limited, so it's first come, first served. All you need is a water bottle, bug spray, and a yoga mat if you have one. Uh, Tuesday's class starts at six-thirty with Instructor Kimberly. And Wednesday is a partner class, and it starts at six-thirty with Instructor, uh, Instructors Jamila and Simone, uh, Eastlake Park. Yeah, Eastlake Park. So, for more information, please contact, um, I hope I'm saying this correctly, Fantasy Sears at emotiontherapy@outlook.com or two zero five four four zero three eight five eight. Um, want to also say congratulations to our new principals in District Four, uh, Dr. Tashar King at I-Three Academy, uh, and Ms. Ramika Davis at Woodlawn High School. Uh, Woodlawn will be having a Meet the Principal Day this Thursday, July twenty-first at four P.M. Uh, at the high school. So, want to say congratulations to them. Uh, I also wanted to, um, yeah, just, so I've been doing some, some different listening tours, going around, talking to a lot of young people, uh, some of the different, uh, summer programs, um, in the hopes of finding out what are some of the issues and challenges that, you know, young people want to see addressed, right? Um, I've had an opportunity to go to the Housing Authority, talk to young people over at Collegeville in the north Birmingham area, um, some students at Kids and Jobs, um, and even Girls Inc. And one of the things that, you know, I found, uh, that has been real eye-opening to me, um, is that they are aware of what's going on, uh, around them. Not just here in the city of Birmingham, but in the world, um, on a national scale and international scale. And there are things that, you know, they want to see done. There are things that, you know, they want to be able to get involved with. Um, and so, the goal at the end of this conversation is to really create a youth council. Um, and I think, you know, going to D.C., seeing the young people that, you know, were at the National League of Cities Conference, uh, and seeing how involved and, you know, uh, forward-thinking they were, uh, was something that really, uh, stuck with me. And so, um, really excited about it. And just seeing the young people from A.J. Gass and come up here today and be able to stand in front of a city council meeting and speak, I think we need to make that a, a norm. Um, we need to make that a norm. So, uh, Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. The, um, next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh at three-thirty P.M. here in the council chambers. The, um, tonight, the Five Point South Neighborhood meets at six P.M. at Highlands United Methodist Church. That's the one right behind the fountain that doesn't work, but we hope it will soon. Next Monday is the Crestwood South Neighborhood meeting. They meet, they are still meeting via Zoom. Five Point South is meeting in person. Um, and I, once again, want to congratulate all the people that made the World Games so successful. I'm just very impressed. I, I had fear in my heart that something would go wrong, and I'm just so thrilled that that fear was unfounded and that everything worked out so beautifully. And I, yes, I, like A.J. said, everybody knows there were problems. My goodness, we have problems at home every day. But, um, it's still just, everybody that I know went away with a good feeling. And then, and the bad feeling people, I hope they just keep it to themselves. I don't want to hear it. Um, we would like for residents of District Three to go to our website for information. We try to put everything we receive from just about anybody on that website so people will know what's going on. And that's W.W.W. dot B-H-A-M districtthree.com. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think is now a good time to do a resolution of sympathy. Um, I think it would be appropriate if, uh, we would pause and do a, uh, resolution of sympathy uh, for a former city clerk and Secretary of the Industrial Development Board, Ms. Paula Smith. She retired as city clerk after serving in that position for fourteen years. Uh, and she also served in a volunteer capacity, uh, on the I.D.B. boards uh, as a secretary as well as treasurer for several years, which, um, many people, uh, don't know. She loved Birmingham and, uh, was very active with, with, within the city, um, uh, both civically and on the Industrial Development Board. And I think that, uh, everyone, I mean, she was a little bit before my time, but I know that she worked with a lot of people in this building, and I think that she will be missed, uh, by all. So, I, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion on the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I just want to reiterate that Ms. Smith was also a resident of District Seven, so we mourn her loss as well. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so, thank, thank you all, colleagues, for taking some time for that. Uh, in District Two, we're going to have Brown Springs Neighborhood via Zoom, Thursday, July twenty-first at six o'clock. Southeastlake will be meeting Monday, July twenty-fifth, uh, both by Zoom and, uh, at, uh, Eastlake United Methodist Church. Crestwood will be meeting, uh, in person at Crestwood Tavern on July twenty-fifth at six-thirty. And Huffman will be meeting July twenty-fifth at seven, uh, and that's also a hybrid, Cornerstone High School and Zoom. Um, really want to echo everyone's sentiments on, um, coming off of, um, uh, something that, uh, we were able to showcase, uh, what Birmingham is. And I think that, you know, it speaks a lot to the fact that, and I know we have a lot of people in the room that, that did not volunteer and, and were, spent a lot of hours, but the fact that we as a, not only city of Birmingham, but really our entire metro area came together and we put this on, uh, it's specifically at the sites and, and taking, you know, scanning tickets, things like that by all volunteers. Um, I think that, um, you know, really shows what, you know, the city all came together for one common thing, and we executed it, and we executed it very well. So, shout out to the volunteers and obviously, um, the city of Birmingham personnel that worked. Uh, and, and like Valerie said, we're going to have problems at every event. Um, I know one morning I got a lot of texts and phone calls about some streets that were Um, I know one morning I got a lot of texts and phone calls about some streets that were blocked off, but, um, you know, Chaz graciously took my call and, and tried his hardest to be polite and solve it. And so, um, it was, it's, you know, when we have big events and we, and we'll have problems, but the fact that everyone, uh, said, you know, was calm and said, you know what, we'll fix it. Just chill out for a minute. And that's what our volunteers did too. When we had guests arriving from the different countries and rooms weren't ready and bags weren't there, um, we have numerous stories. One was highlighted where some, where a group drove to Atlanta to get an athlete's bag. Um, I had somebody text me saying that their dad rushed out to Target and got them a bunch of, uh, one of the groups, they were welcoming all the supplies because they weren't ready and it was, it really was a team effort from all of the city of Birmingham. So, um, shout out to everybody that played a part in that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilor Williams. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just a few announcements. Um, Neighborhood Means Evergreen Neighborhood Mean will meet tonight at 6:00 PM in person at Evergreen Baptist Church. Located at 2009 22nd Avenue, South Pratt Meeting will be tonight, 6:00 PM via conference call. Call in numbers 425-436-6352, access code 62520. Smithfield Estates will be meeting tonight at 6:00 PM via conference call. Call in number 605-472-5447, access code 558-467. East Thomas Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Ensley Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, July 21st at 6:00 PM in person at Ensley Rick Center located 2800 Avenue. Kate Ensley can also join the meeting via conference call by dialing 564-888-5515. Access code is 8180107. Drew Hill Neighborhood will meet on Monday, July 25th at 6:30 at Protective Stadium Arena Club located at 1020 24th Street North. Also on Saturday, July 23rd at 9:00 AM. Um, the women on the construction will do a free repair Saturday, DIY, live, do it yourself, learn. Home repair with Realtors and contractors featuring a brief fix your life motivation session. So that's this Saturday at Memorial Park, Rick Center located 5246 Avenue, South Birmingham, Alabama. Also, um, we will not have public safety meeting on Tuesday because I have been sentenced to jury duty. So the next public safety meeting will be August 9th at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, August 4th by 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Woods?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I have a video, but I did want to, uh, really just express really how proud I am with how things went with the World Games. Uh, how thankful really the volunteers, everybody, uh, here on the administration staff who had to, uh, make a lot of sacrifices to get this thing done and not be able to, uh, go and, and watch the games. So I was pretty intentional about trying to go to as many of the venues as I could and ride the shuttle. And everything was, was just really came together great. I mean, it worked really well. And so just really proud to, uh, see us execute on it. I think you, you're always going to have negative things. I think you always have to, to zoom out and look at it from, you know, one, we just wanted to execute it on, you know, get all the games played, get all the medals given out. And, you know, we did that. That went smooth and, uh, just overall good experience. And so really, uh, no major problems, no major issues. And so I really thought, uh, city looked great. Um, really, really, really showed well and really got great feedback from, uh, talking to people from other, other countries. And so it was kind of weird, uh, because we did have such a large law enforcement presence and talking to some of the athletes. It's like, yeah, you know, this is different, you know? So they were kind of like, just really blown away with, uh, just the intentiveness, the way the volunteers were, uh, helping them. And I guess I told them, it's good you're in the South because like in the North it's a little different. And so, uh, really just sharing culture, hearing from people and, uh, getting that done. So I think we can all kind of see, uh, really what we're capable of and, and just really, uh, excited, you know? So well done. Really appreciate everybody who made those sacrifices and, and didn't get to see the games. I did get to see the Chiefs stick their head in a couple of things for a few minutes here and there. And, uh, but they, they made a lot of sacrifice, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo all the sentiment and thanks to, um, the city team and, and just everybody in the city of Birmingham, including the residents who sacrificed as the already thin got thinner for a few days during the, the, uh, World Games. And, um, I hope that, you know, I feel like, you know, we really pulled together as a team as, as it's already been mentioned. And I hope that we will still do a postmortem to really examine, you know, what went well, what could have been better. Because, uh, we did prove to ourselves that we can do big things and, and the next huge thing, uh, is on its way in 2025. Everybody says it's way bigger, uh, the police and fire games. So I just hope, you know, we will, uh, the, the committee that's been working all the time will do a postmortem and see, you know, what we could do better, um, to even, you know, best what we just did. Um, as we continue hopefully to do bigger and better things. Um, I'd like to also offer a resolution of sympathy for former city employee Sue Hudson. Um, Sue was my mother's colleague at Miles College. She worked briefly in the city council office and also in the mayor's office. Um, and passed away recently and will be, I think her funeral is tomorrow at Sardis and I'm not sure of the time. Can I get, um, uh, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution of sympathy. Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now the resolution?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, as for neighborhood meetings in District Eight, we have the Graymont Neighborhood meeting, uh, Wednesday, July 20th at 4:30 PM at Smithfield Library. Um, I guess that they're still in District Eight and Six. I'm not really sure where we are on that yet. You're going to tell us. Okay. Uh, this is an in-person meeting at the library, so please wear a mask. Also, uh, everyone note that we're rising up for Park and Recreation Month. That's, uh, July of each year. Since 1985, U.S. citizens have celebrated Park and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of parks and recreation. Every day, park and recreation professionals are there to bring overall health and well-being and well-being, inclusiveness, play, culture, and recreation to our communities. Parks are at the center of so many experiences and memories, moments that park and recreation professionals help make happen. Our local parks are often our first experiences in nature, our introduction to a favorite hobby or physical activity. They are places to gather with friends and family, spaces to celebrate life's special moments, spots of respite and healing, sites that connect us with essential community services and so much more. So be sure to visit your favorite park today and rise up in support of parks and recreation. Uh, just a reminder, although I probably don't need to, the 36th Annual Function in the Junction is this weekend. Uh, I won't say more. It starts at 11. It's at Erskine Hawkins Park, uh, but you got a, a big, uh, dose of history earlier. Uh, the First Baptist Church of Ensley is hosting the Ensley Community, uh, Block Party. And that's going to be the following weekend in, you know, near the function in the junction, but it's going to be, um, from 11 to 3 on July 30th on 19th Street, the 1500 block of 19th Street. So be sure to bring your, your lawn chairs and come and fellowship with your neighbors. There will be a lot of school supplies given, given away at that event. Another event, uh, coming up on Saturday, August 6th is, uh, hosted by Tabernacle Baptist Church located at 600 Center Street North. It's called Faith, Forks, and Fitness Fair. Faith, Forks, and Fitness Fair. That's going to be Saturday, August 6th from 10 to 2. It's focused on holistic wellness. And, um, the Live Health Smart Alabama Mobile Market will be featured. Uh, the Meds Plus Mobile Wellness Van as well as Chef Clayton Sherrod. There'll be music, exercise demonstrations, and a good word from Pastor Christopher Hamlin, among others. All are invited, uh, to fellowship with Tabernacle on August 6th from 10 to 2. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Councilor Protenia?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, congratulations to Hemp Hill's new principal, Dr. Warren Lewis. She had a meet and greet last night at Hemp Hill Elementary School, so, um, that was very good. I have high hopes for her. The Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting will be meeting at 6:00 PM today, like what Councilor Eppett said. Um, very exciting news. Coach Deion Sanders, head coach of the Jackson State Tigers, will be at Memorial Park at 2:00 PM. Uh, please bring the kids out to meet the former NFL player. The West End branch of the Birmingham Public Library located at 1241 Tuscaloosa Avenue Southwest will have a birthday party on Thursday, July 21st from 11 to 4. Come celebrate with us. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet Monday, July 25th at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, July, well, tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon tomorrow will be placed on next Budget and Finance agenda. Email submissions to laquia.wilson@birminghamal.gov. And the next PIC meeting is on Tuesday, August 2nd at 2:00 PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due July 27 by noon. Um, like everybody's been saying, I'm really proud of the World Games. Uh, really big shout out to Birmingham Fire and Rescue Police and Public Works. Um, not only for them doing overtime for two or three weeks straight, I cannot imagine that. Um, but also making sure that our city is still, um, operating at its best. Um, picking up trash, taking care of the neighborhood. So I'm really excited, like I said before, for what's coming up next. We have a lot of good things. We have the SWAC coming. Um, Deion Sanders, I think, is coming next year. We have the Classic. We, we just have so much going on. So it's a great time to be in Birmingham. I really encourage our own to go out and support our different events because it really does matter when we show up for our own. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Counselors, I know we've said a lot about the World Games and what it's meant to our city. And I just had a few takeaways that I wanted to share with you and things that I thought about as we've gone through these last 10 days. Let's think about it. We have some very underutilized facilities like Sloth Furnace, Battle Will Auditorium, Crossroads Legion Field that played a vital role in the World Games. And just think how we can reimagine the use of each of those facilities as we go forward. We have, the World Games brought more than 80 countries to Birmingham and I'm thankful that we were viewed on television and social media around the world by millions and they got to see the magic of the Magic City. The World Games also did a very good job of utilizing minority and women-owned firms, which caused me to reflect on the disparity report and the work that we've been doing in our legislative body to help to amend that disparity. We had a lot of, um, think about Rashida Roy, Ms. LRY, and the work that she did with the opening and closing ceremonies. And that just started out as a minority, uh, business owner. As evidenced by other international sporting events, the city of Birmingham will become a destination for new businesses, events, tourists, and economic projects. So I just want to say, I feel that we all cherish the opportunities that we had, uh, for the cooperative partnerships and because of the city of Birmingham. We had several metro cities to come together. When we talk about all the law enforcement agencies, what do we have about 18, 19, interlocal agreements with different municipalities?
Yes, and it was actually more after the council approved that state of emergency, we had even more resources come in and assist us from Homeland Security to Border Patrol that actually came in and assisted with road closures and facilities. It was, it was amazing.
That was just a wonderful opportunity for all of us and I can't help but think about the work that was done through the, uh, human trafficking efforts. And when we think about some of the times we're challenged here as councilors by some of the decisions that we make, but we see in the effort that goes into it and how we can think of just our efforts again to make those agreements that we made for the, um, to try to, um, render trafficking and human trafficking and what we've done to support any efforts that we can to eliminate that. So I just think that everyone in this city, everyone involved just needs again to pat themselves on the back and, uh, get the accolades. Again, as we said, lesson learns, or I think you called it a post-mortem. Of course, there are things we could have done better. There are things that could have been accomplished easier, but, um, we can learn from this. And as we move forward to the other events that we know that are coming upon us, uh, we just had an opportunity these past 10 days. I want to call it, we were on Magic City Classic on steroids. So I think that we'll be able to, uh, get through the rest of these. So again, thank everyone for, uh, their efforts. Um, I would like to ask you all to please, um, say hello to our D7 intern. Jaden Hunter is joining us in the D7 office. He's going to be working on special projects for us. And so we're glad, there's Jaden right out there. I didn't see you out there. So Jaden, just stand up and everybody get to know Jaden. And we thank him and you'll be seeing him around the halls, especially on Tuesdays. Uh, today, the Utilities Technology Committee, we will not meet, but this afternoon we do have two D7 neighborhoods meeting. 6 o'clock, we have the Garden Highland Neighborhood. They'll meet at Mount Hilliard Baptist Church. And then at 6:30, we'll be at the Green Acres Neighborhood and we'll be meeting at the Lifting Christ Worship Center. Uh, councilors, the committee, the whole meeting is canceled for tomorrow, so you don't have to come in for that tomorrow. We all need to get a little rest. And, uh, but Thursday, we do have three neighborhood meetings. 1:30, the Industrial Center Neighborhood will meet via conference call. At 6 o'clock, the Hillman Neighborhood will meet at the Mirador Center. And at 6:00 PM, the Germania Park Neighborhood will meet via conference call. We want to thank those officers who are on duty today to maintain our safety. Cedric Pinkert with City Hall, Derek Square with the West Precinct, and Willie Willis with the West Precinct. Counselors, given that, if I can have a motion for adjournment?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And before I hit the gavel, I want to thank our Cracker Jack, wonderful PIO team. They were with us everywhere. I woke somebody up Sunday morning. I said, you gotta come over here with me to the Fox Flex. And so, uh, Cody said, I'm at the beach. And, uh, so Cody, I hope you had a good time. But I thank you, Kim, and we thank Alicia as well. So thank you all. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Councilor Clinton Woods here. We're so excited. We just completed the 2022 World Games right here in the city of Birmingham.
The world has descended upon Birmingham.
Let the games begin!
Uh, so proud, so excited.
I think it's absolutely amazing. You know, we've waited for years now for this to get here.
I really hope that they just see, uh, a city that's working together and open anybody.
Together to make this happen. We had hundreds of volunteers come out and just support the city. So I'm happy to have a chance to go around and just check out everything. I'm just so impressed.
We have good food, good people, good venues. The world has descended upon Birmingham.
Let the games begin!
I think it's absolutely amazing. You know, we've waited for years now for this to get here.
I really hope that they just see, uh, a city that's working together and open anybody.
We have good food, good people, good venues. It's a little hot, but again, it's summertime in the South. So I'm just hoping that they'll get to experience what we experience here every day in Birmingham. It's a great place to live, work, and play, and we want everyone to see that.
The World Games has really been a great experience. Uh, I've been able to meet so many great, uh, athletes from all over the world. Um, and, you know, I think really the city has been able to enjoy just the exposure to some sports that we normally would not be able to, to see. I'm really looking to take in all the games. Go head over and check out powerlifting.
So for, for me as an athlete, for me as a Brazilian, right, playing, it's very special.
Sports have always traditionally brought people together. I do think that the World Games will be no different. It's an opportunity while there's competition and while people are actually competing against each other, there is an awesome spirit of sportsmanship, and it does bring and unite not only the different athletes, but the people that are being represented by those athletes.
I hope everyone takes that good stuff and hospitality back to them at home, and they remember their experience here in Birmingham.
I hope it brings us all together more, that it makes people more friendly and more pleased with their city because even though the traffic's bad, lots of good things are happening and have happened because the World Games are here.
Thank you guys for choosing to come to Birmingham. You didn't have to participate in the World Games this year, but we hope you enjoyed the food, the hospitality. I think everybody's having a lot of fun between the dance battles and just, just the good fun that's been having here, the good energy. The World Games class, that has been so much fun and to see City Walk open, I really have a lot of hope that Birmingham will be able to host more things, but it's been so good. It's, it's just been a blessing being on the city council, and Birmingham, there's more to come like this, so stay tuned.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Counselor Clinton Woods here. We're so excited. We just completed the 2022 World Games right here in the City of Birmingham, brought countries from all over the world right here to compete in our city. So proud, so excited for the way we handled this. Everything went great, you know, from the, the transportation just to the venues, to the entire city administration really coming together to make this happen. We had hundreds of volunteers to really come out and, and just support the city. So I had a chance to go around and just check out everything. I was just so impressed from really bringing City Walk online. I think it's going to be a tremendous asset here for the city, but just excited, man, to get this done, do this smoothly. Have to thank everybody that participated to help make this go off without a hitch. And so we're so excited that Birmingham had the opportunity to be the home for the 2022 World Games, and so we're going to build on this and keep going forward. But just take a moment to appreciate what just happened right here in our hometown. Also, coming up Tuesday, 6:30 PM, the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association is going to meet. They're still meeting via Zoom, and so want to invite you out to stay in the loop with what's going on in your neighborhood. Bring your issues to that neighborhood meeting so we can take care of those things, so you can get the things that you want to see in your neighborhood. Make sure your voice is being heard, and we want to invite you out for that. Also, July 28th, the Fourth Annual District One Budget Meeting. It's a great opportunity to come out, ask questions about the budget. Look, we're going to look back to last year's budget to see what we got for the district, and we're going to look forward to see what we're expecting in this year's budget. Just a great opportunity to understand how money is budgeted, how money is allocated, how money is expended right here with your tax dollars. So just come out, take advantage of that. It's going to be a great time, so want to invite you out. That's again, that's July 28th, East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. Lastly, July 30th, we're going to be partnering Walk with the Doc. It's going to be partnered with Bama Health Foods to bring another Walk with the Doc event. This monthly event takes place at the track at East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. Come out and learn what a healthy lifestyle looks like, what you can do to improve, maybe correct some diagnosis that you may have. Just come out and learn about how to tweak, change your diet, what you should be doing, what kind of exercise you should be doing to really live a healthy life and extend your life. And so we're excited to have great people volunteer to bring this information to you. So like I said, another great event, Walk with the Doc. Bama Health Foods is coming out this week. They're going to be partnering, so again, that's July 30th, 8:30 AM, East Pennsyl Valley Walking Track. So we're going to look forward to seeing you out there. So many great things going on right here in Birmingham, and I just want to invite you to be a part of it. So we're really excited about what we're doing. We're going to keep working on things we need to work on, but we need you to participate in order to make this happen. So thank you so much, and continue being great.